I'd like to open up the Hopkinton Town Council meeting of August 19th, 2013, with a moment of silent meditation and salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business is to approve the consent agenda.
Mr. President, I request pulling the minutes of August 5th, 2013, and the executive session minutes of July 22nd, 2013.
Motion to approve executive session meeting minutes of July 22nd, 2013? Or did you want this, did you want to approve the special town council meeting or the executive Which did you want to pull, Scott?
Executive session minutes.
All right. I make, and I would like to pull the 22nd. I make a motion to approve executive session meeting minutes of July 1st, 2013, continued from August 5th, 2013, set September 3rd, 2013, as a hearing date for a special event permit filed by Foster Parents Limited, set September 16th, 2013, as a hearing date on a request for tax stabilization filed by Stan No Trumbino, set September 3rd, 2013, as a hearing date for a special event permit filed by Holly Tree Camprow, and accept the following report, town clerk.
Did you pull the August 5th?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
Okay. Scott, did you have?
Yeah, I just want to...
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I want to approve the town council minutes of August 5th, 2013, with the corrections presented, printed out.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
I haven't...
Oh, I want to pull the special town council meeting minutes of July 22nd because I need to abstain. Oh, really? They haven't? Okay.
That's involved with the...
And you're pulling the next one, Scott?
I believe I read both of them.
What page?
Is the 22nd in there? Is it in this packet, the 22nd?
No.
Okay.
You had made corrections to August 5th, and then you subsequently passed the baby adoptive corrections.
Okay, that was in our last packet, right?
We've already done that. You pulled the executive session meeting minutes of July 22nd?
The special town council meeting minutes, is that the interviews?
Yes.
Okay, can we pull both of those, both July 22nd? I'll make sure I read both.
Time they're already pulled.
Both of them have been pulled?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, I'm not ready to vote on them tonight. I want to make sure I check.
Right, motion made in the second, and we approved the consent agenda?
With those exceptions.
With those exceptions, yeah. All right, so you pulled the...
Yeah, the two, both the 22nd, right?
Right, we'll pick them up another time.
First public forum. Anyone out there wishing to be heard? No? Okay. Next on the agenda is the town council president's report, is an update on the waiver of interest. I had asked Lisa to check with, I think, well, Mary Lynn, who was in charge, I guess, since we was on vacation, to kind of pull together some information about the tax waiver. We have a policy that was recently enacted where if you haven't been late on your quarterly taxes in the last five years, you're entitled to a waiver of the interest on that one particular quarter. So I was just curious to see if there was any traction with that policy that we enacted. And I'm, you know, glad to see that some folks are aware of it and are actually using it. And it's, to date, I guess through the first three quarters, there's been 10 residents that have sought the waiver of interest, and it's been, I think, fairly successful. It's not a lot of money to the town that we lost, $121, but it's something that I think is a good measure for the residents to say, hey, I missed it, I was on vacation. And I think it's something that we should all be proud of, that we had instituted that waiver. I think it's been talked about for many years and just never went on the books, and I'm just glad that folks are aware of it and actually using it. So I don't know if anyone else has any comments?
I agree.
Scott, do you have any?
It's just a good gesture, not only public relations-wise, but if somebody has a good record, things do happen. So, and it can't be done routinely, so I think the next time, if somebody just gets a waiver, they have to wait another five years. So it's, it's really a good gesture.
Yep, thanks. Anybody else have anything?
No.
Okay. Next on, under my report was elderly property tax exemptions. I received an email from a resident after they paid their taxes, and he wanted to know, I guess, what we were doing to, for the elderly folks in our community. I said, geez, you know, I said, I know we've got at least two or three exemptions that currently exist. There's a 65 age, 65 in income exemption, there's an 85-year-old exemption, and I believe there's also a veteran exemption.
And a blind.
And a blind, okay.
I believe there's a blind one, too.
So, you know, I wasn't sure to what degree we were reaching out, and to what degree that the taxes were being reduced. So I said I'd have to get back to them. So I researched it, and I actually had Rita do some background information for me, and I was pleased to see how much actually we were giving to the seniors. You know, we'll all be there someday, so I was pretty happy that we were helping out a lot of folks. And I'll just read you a snippet that Rita had sent Bill, the town manager, and then Bill to me. She had run some reports that contain all the exemptions and the dollar amounts. In 2012, the elderly, they were, for the elderly, there were 138 taxpayers in the program with $153,598 that was coming off the tax roll. In 2013, for the elderly, there were 165 taxpayers in the program with $173,888 coming off the tax roll. So, you know, it's a lot of money, and I just didn't know to what degree we were helping out the seniors. And once I got those figures, I said, boy, you know, we are really helping out them a great deal. It's a lot of money to come off the annual tax rolls. And I subsequently sent that person an email saying, thanks for your concern, and this is the figures that I obtained, and we are helping them out to a great degree, in my opinion, and they were happy to get the information. And I also, you know, said that we probably won't pursue any other further exemptions, because that was his point. But anyway, does anyone else have any questions, concerns, or...
I think it was about six years ago, 2006, 2007, when we instituted some of the elderly tax abatement. I know Tom Buck and I worked on those, but we really thought that was important to have because we do have now, on the new census, of course, 10% of our citizens are over 65, and we need to really pay attention to them a little bit more than we do. But I'm very glad that this was set up quite some time ago, and it does seem to be working very well.
I think one of the things that we should be looking at, maybe contacting the league of cities and towns, is I do not, I know, I realize that we do not have to follow what other communities do, but it'd be nice to know how we rank addressing those needs with other communities. Certainly no requirement, and I know a lot of people say we don't have to do what other towns do, but I think it would be a good idea as a yardstick for us to consider when we look at these things. But I don't have a problem looking at the exception.
Yeah, I mean, the intent of me putting it on the agenda was really just to let folks know to what extent we're helping out the seniors in our community. And I think, you know, looking at these numbers, there's a fair amount of money that's coming off the tax roll, and I think it's great. And, you know, we can revisit something in the future, but I think for now, we're doing a pretty good job of helping them out and assisting in them in the tax reductions.
I would agree.
David, anything?
No, it's a wonderful program. It helps the town in a lot of ways. First of all, seniors, a lot of seniors, they call it fixed income, but basically they're living off social security, a pension possibly, and things like that. But they don't have the advantage of getting a raise anymore. So the cost of living may go up, but the seniors' income, more often than not, stays static. So that's one good reason. Another good reason is, is it's good to keep people in their houses after the children have left. They've grown up here, they know the town, the town knows them, their neighbors know them. It's a stabilization situation for a community, and I think it's really good in that sense. It also, and I'm not going after anybody here, but it also keeps seniors in their houses. Instead of them selling the house and having a family move in, the next thing you know is we've got a whole lot more kids in this town because all the seniors have moved out because they can't afford to live here anymore, and young people have moved in, and the next thing, our schools are bursting at the seams again. So it helps with the educational costs, and in any town, in this town in particular. So there's some good reasons right there.
Yep, thanks, David. Anything else you guys want to say? Okay, next on the agenda is the town manager's report. Bill McGarry?
Thank you. South Drive Drainage Project, on August 5th, I attended the mandatory pre-bid meeting for the contractors on the project. Also present was DPW Director Tim Teft and Fossett O'Neill Engineer Sean Martin. We received, there were 10 company representatives who attended the meeting, and Sean Martin reviewed the documents with them and answered several of their questions on the bidding process and actually the project itself. And after the meeting, we all traveled to the site on South Drive where the contractors inspected the site. Bids were opened on August 13th, and the town council is scheduled to consider a bid award at a future meeting, probably on September 3rd. On August 7th, I met with Jim Lampfear and Brad Ward for the third time to finalize the zoning ordinance revision, RFP, and the advertisement for it. The RFP was advertised on August 11th with a mandatory pre-bid conference that took place this morning, and bids are scheduled to be opened on August 29th and reviewed for council consideration at the September 16th council meeting. And lastly, the development of the town's proposed stormwater management program is ongoing, and the plan will be scheduled for, again, council discussion, consideration, and approval at a future council meeting, and we're looking at the scheduled calls for a timetable on that of October 7th.
Okay. Barbara?
Can I go back to South Drive Drainage Project? I know you received the bids. When are you opening them and awarding it?
The bids have already been opened.
Oh, okay, good. So when are you awarding it?
On South Drive. The council would be, you know, the authority to award the bid, and that's scheduled for the next council meeting, September 3rd.
September 3rd, so they won't be able to begin until later? Because I thought they were going to be able to begin by September 1, and you were going to be having those awarded in August.
Well, we wanted to award them at this meeting, but it just wasn't ready in time.
Okay, so now we're postponing until, I'm just concerned because that's a bus stop with five elementary school children when they start tearing it up. So now we will look at that for September 3rd. Are they still planning on finishing by October 1?
The date of completion hasn't changed. We want to finish the project before the snow flies this year. And according to the contractor, who most probably will win the bid, he'll be the recommendation of Fossett and O'Neill and a low bidder. He's available to start that project immediately, so...
Okay. I'm just really concerned about that for those little children, because there are literally five of them in that, right in that spot.
Yeah, even from the outset, there was no way that project was going to be completed by the time that school started.
Right, I just thought by October...
The deadline date was, I think, late October?
I thought it was early October, but nonetheless, we'll see.
October sometime.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
Anybody else? Phil, I just had a quick question on the stormwater management. Do you know, I guess, in the general terms, how much time the DPW folks might have to spend on that particular plan? You know, I'm just curious. It seems like it's quite a lot of drainage areas that they need to inspect. It seems like there's a lot of them, I don't know, just things like that. Could be a full-time job, I guess.
It's a very comprehensive plan. The plan itself is a couple of inches thick, and there are a lot of requirements for our local DPW. But the good part about it is that it's a working document. It's like a work in progress. So by the time the council approves it and it's submitted to the state DEM for approval, we don't have to have every sewer drain in the town identified and know where their fallout is. It's like a work in progress. What we have right now, we submit for the plan, and then we work on it as we go along.
I see, okay. All right, great, thanks.
So it's like a work in progress, like a working document.
Okay, good, thank you. Scott, you have anything?
No.
Okay, great. Thanks, Bill. Next, under new business, I had put library funding discussion regarding state funding for libraries, maintenance of effort requirements. I don't want our friends in the library to get nervous. The reason I put this on, quite honestly, was based on our prior budget discussions. Sylvia had mentioned, you know, giving more money to libraries, and I think because of the maintenance of effort requirement, you know, it's a permanent thing. So my thought was, you know, put it out there and put it for discussion. If you guys say, hey, Frank, you know, or the council, hey, it's crazy, we want to leave well enough alone, so be it, that's fine with me. I just was hoping that maybe we could, you know, engage in some discussion about that maintenance of effort, mainly for the upside, it's not for the downside, obviously. We handle our finances pretty well, but, you know, in talking to the manager today, you know, some other communities where there's millions of dollars in library funding, you know, they may not be so keen about that maintenance of effort going away. So it's just merely for discussion purposes. I don't want anybody to get nervous thinking we're gonna, you know, want to pursue this to the degree. Obviously, if you folks are against it, I'm fine with that. So does anybody out, I guess, want to speak to that point? If you do, come to the podium, Michelle, and then we'll chat.
I'm Michelle Walker from Rockville, the president of the Langworthy Public Library. And, yeah, I think it was in March where we talked about the fact that, hey, you know, this is an opportunity to give the library some money, but we can't get locked in. And we have a great deal of sympathy for that, we understand. I think we need to do some research. Debbie News was in touch with the state library, and this, you know, this doesn't happen a lot. Usually it's level funding across the board. Although there was one year in Hopkinton where we didn't get funded, and we didn't get any state funds that year, but then it was, you know, reinstated the following year, so it worked out. There may be a way of putting funds into a separate account that's not initially earmarked for the library. We have to get more details on how that would work. Maybe that's a way, for a year when you say, hey, we've got money this year, we're not going to have the same money next year, we might be able to give this to you, there may be a way of putting that separately and making it available. We don't have the details on that, though.
Would that affect the maintenance of effort figure?
It might not. There might be a way of avoiding that. I would say that the libraries, I mean, the maintenance of effort is crucial to us because, you know, we just couldn't run the library without it. However, we understand that, and especially a town this size with a school budget the way it is, there are going to be years when, you know, say, this is the year, but, you know, next year we're going to get hit hard, so let's, you know, do it when we can and not stay locked in. We wouldn't want to see it happen every year, but we would understand, and we would welcome that from time to time.
It's kind of control your own destiny. You know, it's like a budget line item. I kind of look at it, you know, we certainly give the same amount typically every year, and it seems every three or four years we'll give you more.
Right.
But, you know, Sylvia had wanted to give more this budget season, but because of that maintenance of effort, you know, it's just, it's hard to get out of, it's a permanent thing, so...
Right, and, yeah, I wish I had known, had a little bit of this information at that time. I didn't.
Yeah, that's fine, but, yeah, I guess, you know, whatever information you can get about that special account, that might be helpful.
We'll look into that.
Yeah, yeah. David, do you have any questions?
Would this be something like funding the Friends of a Library Association?
I don't think...
In other words, and then the Friends of the Library provide that money, have we given them to the library?
Do you have more details on that, Debbie or Heather?
When I called today, they were all busy getting ready for some really big meeting, so the person that I was forwarded to really doesn't have the information that I needed. She recommended and said that it's possible that it be earmarked for specific cause or specific line item, but she said that she was not 100% sure of that, and if I needed more information, that we could get it from them, but, you know, rather...
Would that line item be with you or with us?
It would be maybe funding a specific, you know, some sort of specific item at the library's...
Paving the parking lot?
Paving the parking lot, something like that.
Or a specific program, maybe, something like that.
Exactly. So it's not exactly part of the town's maintenance of our budget. It's more funding a specific thing, and that's one way to cover it. But she was not 100% sure on that either.
You'll get back to us on that. Does anybody else have any...
Absolutely.
Yeah, I do.
Okay, Scott, good.
First of all, I appreciate your comments. Many decades ago, I was a trustee of the Asherway Library, and I had suggested this thing with the maintenance of effort when we were doing the budget. The mechanical problem the town has is we have in Rhode Island called a budget cap. And to further complicate that, we're in a regional school district, only three-town school district, and the budget of Cherahoe impacts the member towns dramatically differently. And as a maintenance of effort with our schools, the thing that can, and I was just going to throw out a percentage, like, it can't be reduced, the library, for example, 80%, 95% or whatever, because a goal that the council has is staying within our budget cap. And of course, the schools have this maintenance of effort situation, but the member towns are impacted differently. So in one size doesn't fit all when you do all the communities, because all the different communities impact differently. But I really appreciate the attitude because instead of coming in and saying, how dare you question this, you're really understanding, so I thoroughly appreciate that, I want to say that. It's a good way to approach government. The fact of the matter is, the council is certainly under pressure from citizens to keep taxes in check, and we also have to recognize our public libraries, both libraries in our town, are really the social setting. They're more than just a place of learning or getting books or using the computer. It's actually a social place for people, because there's not many places to go in Hopkinton in public, other than the recreation directors and the libraries and your local restaurants, you can't hang out there indefinitely. But the library are so crucial. The only question I have between the two libraries in town, I noticed that, I know Hope Valley seems to have more hours open than Ashaway, because I think you open on Monday nights, correct me if I'm wrong...
We are open on Monday nights.
And you open later on Saturdays by an hour. How do you think the council, or is it important for the council to consider the fact that the libraries aren't open the same number of hours? Because you could also argue maybe the different ends of towns aren't being serviced because they don't have the accessibility to the library because they always...
Let me just stop you for one second, Scott. The agenda I have is library funding discussion, restate funding for libraries, maintenance of effort requirements. So try not to stray too far from that.
Okay, I pretty much said what was on my mind, and I apologize if I stray beyond that. And it's probably a day that doesn't go by I don't go to the Asherway Library. Once in a rare, and once in a while I don't go there, but I'm a famous site or notable site in the Asherway Library daily.
And we send out a search party.
Yeah, I actually have some stuff to say. Personally, I love my libraries, and I actually love both of your libraries. I think you're wonderful, and I think you should get more money. And I know this is one of the years that indeed, you know, we'll look into it. But I want to take this from an opposite perspective, because I was thinking about it, because this is a problem. The maintenance of effort is an issue, because we cannot go down. But as far as I'm concerned, the state is determining our municipal grants, not our municipal services, but our grants that we give of our volition. Now, the problem here is that the state doesn't give you enough money. So we have all the money, and they make the rules. Now, if I'm at a poker table and I bring my auntie in, my auntie's $60,000, their auntie's $12,000, and they make the rules. I said, that's a problem, because I should make the rules. I'm the one giving the majority of the money. They're not even coming up to 20% of my money. Now, that might be different in Providence and Cranston, but I want to see the state coming up to the table and putting their money where their mouth is. If they want to tell me what to do with my money and I can't reduce it or I can't go up and down, I want to see them come up with more money for you, because they need to come to this table with more cash. Because we have the cash, we're the ones at the table supporting our libraries, not the state. You are so far under, as far as the state is concerned, they're not even close to the amounts of money that Hopkinton puts in. So they need to start thinking about this maintenance of effort. I mean, I would just as soon, in all fairness, give you $72,000. I'll take that 12 and that 60 and say, okay, you have nothing to do with the state anymore. But you can't tell me whether I can raise or lower the monies, because they're tying our hands. We're getting our hands tied, and they don't give you enough money to tie my hands. Now, if they gave you 60K and I gave you 60K, absolutely, but they don't. And I think especially for the rural libraries, the smaller libraries, they are not coming up to snuff. And they certainly do it for the state libraries, I mean, for the Providence, for your bigger cities. It's time that they gave you more money, and it's time that the librarians, I think the boards, should go to the library people in Providence and say, you've got to come up to the table with more cash, instead of saying, well, I'm giving you 2 cents and I'm going to make the rules, and by the way, you give them 200 bucks. It's not fair. I'm going it from an entirely opposite direction, because I do think this is ridiculous. We should be able to give you money as we so choose, without us worrying about whether we can go up or down according to their little $12,000. I can give you 12K, and I don't have to worry about the state anymore. This is silly. This is silly. And I think it may have begun in the '30s or the '40s, whenever they began this, and maybe we were even. Maybe the towns gave only 5,000 and they gave 4,000. I mean, you know, maybe it was very even. It's not even anymore. And we're the ones giving you a grant, and you're not a municipal department. I mean, you're a private entity, and I have no problems giving you the money. I have problems tying my hands and saying, well, you don't have any choice, Barbara. Well, of course I have a choice, but I think the state is wrong, and I think you should address it, because they should be giving you at least 40,000 if I'm giving you 60. They should come up at least to 2/3 if I'm giving the majority. This giving you less than 20% of what I give you is ridiculous, and then telling me I can't do something. I mean, I think you really need to look at it, and I really think you need to address it, because it's infuriating. I mean, we should have been able to say, oh, we can give them another 2,000 this year, and maybe next year, maybe next year's really bad. Like, 2009 was horrible, 2008, 2009. But we couldn't go down, although according to this OLIS waiver procedure for municipal of effort, in 2009 and 10, 9 and 10, they could have done less. We could all, all of us done less specifically for those years. But we didn't get this piece of paper. I never saw this.
Well, that's...
I know, exactly. But they didn't bring it to us, but I'm sure that the people in Providence saw it, because they don't really care what Providence libraries do, they give so much money. Here, they don't give you enough, and I think you need to fight for it. You need to say, you know, we actually service, you know, a larger percentage of our children than I would say some of the cities do. Because when you look at the amount of kids you handle, the amount of people you handle in a town, I mean, we know we have 8,188 citizens. I'll bet between the two of you, you service 2,000 or 3,000 of them. Well, I can't say that for some library in Providence. I don't think they serve 2/3 or over half of their citizens. You know, and I mean, you actually have the, you know, people writing their names down so you know they exist. So I think that's my problem with the maintenance of effort, is I really want to see the state coming up. If they want to make the rules, then they better come up with the cash, because right now, we come up with the cash.
That funding form...
It's a funding form.
I assume it's population-based, but maybe not, who knows?
It's 13,508, 50 for the coming fiscal year.
13,000, nothing.
Yeah, that's per library. Yeah, that's the, we're getting 12,000 or so per library.
Yeah, but we're giving you 60. We're giving you five times as much as they are, and...
Plus another 7,000, not quite half, based on the fact that we use some of our endowment. So it's about, is that about 35, we just said? About 35,000 we get from the state. Hey, I'd love to get some more, but I'm not arguing, just to set the numbers straight.
Yeah, but it's 35,000 to 120,000. We give you 60 each.
Right.
So it's 35,000 to 120, I give you five times more money. They should come up to the table. the table.
We don't know how it's based, though.
I understand they don't know how it's based, but I think if they're going to make the rules, they better come up with more cash.
It's population-based, and certainly they can, and just by our size, we're not going to be able to.
We're never going to compete.
We're never going to compete, and the small libraries.
But what's your percentage?
We do have a group of small libraries that meet, and the inequity is there.
But you should talk to them, because the percentage of the amount of people, if you have 8,188 citizens, and you guys are easily handling 4,000 or more of them between you, you're handling over 50% of our populace. Now, you can get to, a small library handles more of a percentage of its populace than a large library in, you know, they're handling out-of-state students, all the rest of it. These are in-state people. I just think you need to look, I mean, you know, Michelle, like, looking at the numbers, because that's really the number, and they're making determinations, and yet we have the money.
That's not how it's based on, you know, unfortunately. You know, they can certainly plead their case, and maybe they will, but, you know, I just wanted to start the discussion of having some autonomy on the maintenance of effort figure.
I think it's a great discussion.
You know, to be able to say, hey, this year, we're okay. We can give a couple thousand each library without having it be a permanent thing. And some things that you guys are kind of investigating might help us out to that end.
Right.
So, you know.
I think it's a great discussion to have. I'm glad you brought it up.
Yeah. Yeah. Like I said, you know, I appreciate your services. My wife's on the board recently now, and hopefully she'll do some good things with fundraising. But anyway.
Can I, I like your.
I hope that we can come to some conclusion, and then I think ultimately, we would have to solicit our legislative partners to sponsor some kind of bill to figure something else.
And some kind of legislation to say, you know, the maintenance of effort, especially if we're giving five times the amount, well, obviously, they can back it off, and just say, we can do as we wish, up to 20% of our budget, of the library budget that we give you. Give us some place to move, because they're not helping you.
Well, I mean, it's certainly, if the maintenance of effort requirement is having the effect that towns and cities are reluctant to ever increase the funding, then, yeah, it's not a competition.
It's not a competition at all. Exactly. And it's not fair. I mean, we shouldn't be up here discussing, oh, we can't, because you would demand it next year. You know, we should never have that part of a discussion in our budget cycle. We should say, well, they need $2,000 or 3,000 or whatever we're going to give you. But we shouldn't be saying, well, we can't do that, because then we're locked. I mean, we have enough problems with the school. We certainly don't want to become like that. But that should never be part of our budget discussion with our own libraries.
Right.
I think that's embarrassing.
I agree.
Scott, do you have any?
Yes, I do. I got a couple of things. First of all, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe, it's my understanding, it's very tough to get waivers. So, under the present system, it's difficult and not easy to get waivers.
It's very difficult to do it.
And also, I'd like to point out, the Rhode Island State Constitution, I believe, is Article 12, Section 1, talks about the state promoting education, but it also mentions our public libraries. And I think, I think it's Article 12, Section 1. Well, I know a lot of libraries are private, even the Westbury Library is not a municipal, but we have both municipal and private libraries. Most libraries, I would say, in Rhode Island are private entities with support from the government. The thing also, we have to take in, maybe the state should have a maintenance of effort. But what concerns me is a report that I heard at a political meeting, that apparently the budget deficit in Rhode Island is going to be hundreds of millions of dollars. So, I don't know how the state is going to come up with that type of money for the libraries or a lot of other things. But anyways, I believe in our libraries. I'm lucky Ashbury Library doesn't charge me rent. And, but I wish the libraries well, but I really appreciate your attitude tonight. You're not screaming at the council, and you try to come up with a solution. Thank you.
I look at us as a team that works together for our citizens.
And we appreciate your support. Thanks for bringing this up.
Yeah. Sorry, it was last minute. I just.
Oh, that's all right.
Do let us know what you find out from your small libraries.
Yeah, we'll get in touch and see what's appropriate as far as getting the information to you, whether it's attending a meeting or just submitting it.
Unfortunately.
Yeah, be interested to find out about that other account situation.
Yes. Unfortunately, the director of the bulus retired in June, and I don't believe that they replaced him here. So, it might be a little bit before we can figure that out. But I'm going to keep hammering them and making sure that they get back to us.
Thanks, ladies.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Really appreciate it.
Okay. Thanks, everyone, for that discussion. Next on the agenda is the last public forum. Anyone out there wishing to be heard? Okay. Motion to adjourn?
Mr. President, I make a motion that we adjourn in memory of the late G. Byron Champlin Jr., the late Carol K. Christopher, and in honor of Frederick Kenny. Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you.